...the Atherton City Town Council September 17, 2014, regular meeting. Can I have everybody stand up for your votes?
On the pledge of allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Councilmember Woodmore?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
Vice Mayor DeGolia?
Here.
Mayor Wees?
Here. Thank you. We did have a presentation this evening, but a proclamation, but we are going to be mailing that, and we're going to move on to item number four. To public comments, to any member of the public that wants to speak related to items that is not on the agenda.
Good evening. I'm Paul Jones. I'm a resident of the county of Fallin Drive. I'm also the known as Chair of the Draft Committee. I'm here, however, tonight as a private individual to refer some to their attention, which hopefully will rip it off later on. As you know, the council has come out against both high-speed rail down Peninsula and the electrification of Caltrain. It has come to my attention that we have, there are legal grounds to litigate against both high-speed rail and Caltrain to eliminate the use of the Proposition 1A bonds for the electrification project and other improvements that may be considered for the Caltrain route to make it compatible with high-speed rail. The reason for this is that the $900 billion that were allocated to high-speed rail must be used exclusively for high-speed rail facilities that are for high-speed rail only. They're not shared with other transportation modes. And the electrification and other improvements are obviously shared by the Caltrain traffic and also by the freight. The $950 million for connections are grossly oversubscribed. Everyone is grabbing for that money. And the possibility that Caltrain could get enough of that to complete their electrification, I think is highly doubtful. So it's quite possible in litigation to prevent the use of the high-speed rail bonds for that purpose, mine too slow, stall, or even stop the electrification project. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other public comments? Seeing that, we're going to go ahead and close public comments and move to, we have nothing to report on a closed session, because there was no closed session. Uh, city manager report. Item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have the written city manager's report before you. I just wanted to note a couple items within the report. One is, we included in the report the December holiday closures, so just so the public's aware of that, we'll be posting that on the town website, as well as sending it out as part of some newsflash to the community, so they're aware of that upcoming closure. We note the upcoming projects that are coming before the council, the goal setting for the bicycle pedestrian master plan, setting up priorities that's set for the October 1st study session, review of the town's sign ordinance, we're planning to bring that back to the council on October 1st as well. And we can schedule multiple study sessions for these, there's no rush in getting these moving forward. The operational study request, RFP, is scheduled for October 15th, and I'm going to cede some of my time in my report here to Mike Koshewagi, who's going to give an oral status report on that. The architectural design services for the civic center, we have an item on tonight's agenda for the RFQ, but the RFP is set for October 15th. And a big one, a topic in town, is the wireless telecommunications facility ordinance, that's something we want to get before the council at the November 5th study session. So that concludes my portion of the report, and I'd like to turn it over to Mike, who's going to give a report on ECR operational study.
Yes, the Alcuminor Real operational study, I think all of you know, is tied to the initiative to seek Caltrans approval to reduce the number of lanes on Alcuminor Real from six lanes to four. And so this operational study is a necessary first step in order to do that. Atherton and staff met with Caltrans in July to discuss the scope of the analysis Caltrans require and determine what Caltrans process we need to follow to ensure we have Caltrans' review and participation. Atherton and staff, at that meeting, we received very little directional guidance from Caltrans regarding their required scope for this operational analysis. So it was agreed that the town of Atherton would submit a scope for Caltrans review and comment, and we did that. A scope was provided to Caltrans in late July, and we recently received comments. As a result of that, we've modified the scope to comply with the requirements of Caltrans. And a request for proposal is now being prepared by staff, and we'll come to the city council in October for your approval to advertise. We still need to determine the Caltrans process we need to follow to enable Caltrans staff to spend necessary time and resources on that effort. And I'm hoping to meet with Caltrans staff next week to get more clarity on that. Another thing to update you on is, you know, to improving the visibility at the intersection of Selby and Alcuminor Real. As a result of council discussion earlier this year, in the spring of 2014, staff met with Caltrans to discuss possible improvements at Alcuminor Real Selby Lane to improve visibility for alternative vehicles. And at that meeting, we arrived at an agreed-upon solution, which was to eliminate the ability of vehicles traveling southbound on Alcuminor Real to turn left into Markham Dexter Streets, which is part of San Mateo County. By restricting this movement, southbound vehicles will be forced to make a U-turn at the traffic signal at Fifth Avenue and ECR, travel a short distance northbound, and make a U-turn to get to their, to their homes. However, prior to Caltrans supporting this alternative, an operational analysis would need to be performed to determine the impacts of this to the signal operations at Fifth Avenue and Alcuminor Real. Caltrans committed to perform this analysis, however, this work has not been completed to date, and we're still trying to get a schedule from Caltrans on when this will be performed. Staff met with Jim Porter, San Mateo County Public Works Director, regarding this possible solution. Mr. Porter was naturally concerned about the inconvenience this would create for drivers and residents accessing the Markham Dexter area. One of the outcomes are, as a result of, you know, the operational analysis and improving site distance visibility at Selby and Alcuminor Real, the town is also in the process of trying to schedule a meeting with Caltrans District 4 Director to make sure he's aware of these two important initiatives that the town is, is interested in pursuing and to try to get some, some staff direction from him to move forward.
Beautiful, Mike. Any, yes, any questions from the council?
I have a couple. One for Mike and one for city manager. Regarding the mayor vice mayor meetings, you identified Menlo Park, Middletown City. Could we also include our county representatives in these meetings because we do border, not only Menlo Park and Middletown City, but we also border county property? And I think that there are projects that we may be wanting to implement that does include county involvement.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. And as these meetings evolve, we may also, you know, the city might drop out for a particular meeting, but Woodside might.
Okay.
And that sort of thing.
Oh, sure, yes. The other thing for Mike, thank you for the update on the Selby and the turnaround, U-turn. I've heard from some residents that the real issue of the problem at that intersection of Fifth Avenue and the U-turn there would be the two right-hand turning lanes off of Fifth Avenue onto ECR going north as a potential problem that would really clog things up if a U-turn was allowed there. So would the operational study address that?
That's a, that's one of the reasons to perform that operational study, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question. Mike, with regard to the Caltrans study on looking at eliminating that left turn lane, the southbound left turn lane from ECR, you said they haven't completed it. Have they begun it?
I don't believe so.
And is that what your meeting next week is going to address?
It's going to address that as well as, there's several things. It's really to check on the status of the operational study at the Fifth Avenue ECR signal, and also to, also try to get some clarity on what process, Caltrans process, the operational analysis of Alcuminor Real needs to follow. And where that's important is that Caltrans staff is not authorized to spend any time on anything that isn't part of the process, and they have their, their personal time budget, they have a budget for their time. So that's why it's important for us to identify that process, so we can ensure that we're going to get the necessary Caltrans technical review and participation.
So do we know if they have actually allocated the personal time in terms of the individuals that were going to have to do the review to the number of lanes on ECR, that portion of the study?
That, that, it has not been allocated, and that's the whole reason to try to identify that process, because that's part of that allocation process.
Okay. And my understanding is that the third issue of the operational study, in addition to how many lanes El Camino would have, the question of the left turn lane at, at Selby Lane, the third area would be looking at all of the crossings that we have in Atherton. I mean, there are seven crossings, we've just had somebody die at Almond Drawl, and I think that there need, we need to include the question of safety at those crossings and what can be done to improve safety.
Correct. And, and I guess the, as staff, the way we're viewing this is that, you know, the initial thing is to see if the reduction from six lanes to four is even feasible, and that's the purpose of the operational study. And if the, if the results of that says that it's not feasible, well then there are other things, I think, that can be done to improve, you know, bicycle pedestrian, you know, safety along that corridor.
Can I just have another follow-up question about that? Is the revised scope of, that was submitted to Caltrans, is that available for public viewing, was it, that was given to council?
Yes, and actually, that will be part of the request for proposal.
Okay.
Is that scope of work?
Okay.
Yes.
So do we have that now? I'm sorry.
It's still in draft form.
Okay.
Right. It'll be coming to council for your review and approval in October.
In October? Okay. Okay.
Vice Mayor DeGolia? Yeah, I'm okay. We're good. Thank you very much. So let's go ahead and move on to item number seven, Community Organization Roundtable Agenda Calendar. Items number eight through 21.
Mr. Mayor, before you continue, I have a couple of comments on consent.
Please.
Just as a note, the minutes of June 18th are lacking in detail on item number 21, or 29. The motion detail, we'll correct that before they're executed.
June 18th, 2016. June 16th, I think.
16th, yeah, probably June 16th. The HR manual item, which is item number 10.
It is June 18th.
Yeah, there's, there's two of them.
This one's probably wrong.
Okay, the, on item number 10, the HR manual, there's a couple of modifications that I'll be making in the manual as part of this adoption this evening. One is to modify policy number 405 related to smoking. Change to smoking is prohibited within any town building, on-town premises, including within 20 feet of any entrance and exit doors or in-town vehicles. A change to the policy number 415 on expense reimbursement to read, expenses shall be consistent with the approved town budget and any applicable town travel policy. And then policy number 4016 related to natural disaster ambitions, there's a first paragraph there that I'll be eliminating. And I forwarded some of this information to the council in advance for these particular changes. Item number 12, the SFC groundwater resolution, it's noted in there that the water tower at the park aids in part of the town's emergency water supply and stands ready to provide water to residents, but we've got no liner in that tower, so we can't actually do that.
Can't.
If we put water in, it's probably going to come right out the sides, and we don't want that. But we do have other resources at the park that can be brought to bear. Item number, um, 19, just as an FYI, on bridge inspections. We're going to be starting those bridge inspections with those two bridges in and out of Holbrook Park and Park, just because of the big project coming with Little League. And I think that concludes the modifications to items on the consent agenda.
Well, I do want to thank you for telling us that there's no water in the water tower that we all run. The assumption that is empty water tower, but it was a little confusing, I was.
It does stand, but it's not standing right.
There's always water in front of it.
There's always water in front of the base, yes.
Dial down the, your game.
All right. So with those modifications in mind, does any member of the public want to pull any item number eight through 21, which are on the consent calendar, off the agenda? Seeing that, we're going to go ahead and close that, bring it back to council, any members of council, would you like to?
Yeah.
Up to you. Okay. Oh, no, not really.
Anyone want to pull?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss just very briefly, make a comment on number 11.
Okay.
And I would like to discuss in a little bit, potentially a little bit more detail, item 17.
Item number 17. Bill, would you like to go ahead and see if you can get your clarifications?
Sure. First off, you know, I'd like to say, as many, some people know on this council, this is a long overdue project. It's been promised five years ago, and so first off, it was a good work for Theresa and George to get it out. I went over it in detail, and I appreciate George sending out the clarification. I do think that, I think some of the items in that, potentially, I realize in discussing with George, some of the benefits that we specifically detail out in, in very specific descriptions, may or may not be applicable to the size of organization we are. I know that the HR organization, or the HR fringe benefit requirements that we have here in California and in the states, it's kind of a moving target. Things just changed just recently with Governor Brown signing some legislation. But with my, other than with the healthcare, my understanding is, is that some of the things that potentially we may have been provided, or detailing out, not saying that we wouldn't have to provide them, but we could, are not, are applicable only to organizations of 50 or more employees, and we don't have that. So I know that we had, the city manager explained to me that he had a series of attorneys look over this, and I'm sure that they work with very large organizations, and it just would be prudent for us to make sure that, that we don't have things written down that potentially we may want to change. Also, there is some duplicity in the, in the document, and as everybody knows, when you have things stated, the same thing twice in a document, when you change it, you may forget to change it elsewhere, and it causes confusion. So as we update the manual over time, I would hope that we would take those things out. And, and of course, you know, it took five years to get it. I think the key thing here is that we keep it updated, and so we need to also make sure that in our annual operating plan, that we plan on having it, you know, refreshed annually to make sure that we don't fall out of favor, and we make sure that it's properly addressed and as slim as it could be, as opposed to, you know, a dictionary. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Bill. So since you had 17, what can you add, any clarity on 17?
Sure. Item 17 was a little confusing to me because being the council representative on the Bike Ped Master Plan, when we met with Alta, we had identified other areas that, that should have had priority prior to, say, this one. And, and I was, you know, I regularly asked for status on these proposals, you know, and then this one just kind of pops out of the blue. So I'm a little bit befuddled at how that all happened. It's not in line with, with what at least the committee had in mind for, for priority. Also, some of us may have gotten a letter, but I know that there is some discussion between the town and, of course, the fire district. And, you know, they asked several times that they be a party to discussions and plans and things like that, and it didn't appear to me from some of the letters that I've received, that the fire district has been consulted on this. So while I'm all in favor of, let's say, for example, the hybrid beacon and the, there are no left turn that we've talked to, I am a little concerned with, with, with what we're actually proposing, because I don't really see, other than the picture, I don't really see the proposal. And I asked for the proposal, but I hadn't had a chance to get it yet. So, you know, given that, I don't know what the timeframe is for the need for submitting it right away, but perhaps this thing should be continued to where we can look at it and we can make sure it's, it's consistent with our study that we're just talked about a few minutes ago, as well as make sure that the fire district has an opportunity to look at this and make some comments. Those are my.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think, I explained some of that item in an email to the council earlier today, based on some of that earlier feedback. And Mike might be able to shed some light on the process to it. And I think this, if I'm not mistaken, is part of a broader plan as well, down ECR, Grand Boulevard rings a bell, but I don't know whether it's actually a component of that or consistent with that. And I know the fire district has probably had them put into that process. So go ahead, Mike.
And first of all, if there's been any, you know, gaps in communication, we apologize for that. But the key driver here, quite honestly, is that we try to match, you know, this, these are very competitive grants. And so in order to maximize the town's chances of getting their grant approved and getting this money, you know, what we try to do is not necessarily work off any type of priority list from the town as far as construction-wise, but it's matching up what we believe is a project that's part of that list to what we believe that, you know, is going to be competitive in the grant. And so that's why this particular grant was submitted. And also, it has already been submitted. The, the purpose of this evening's item is that one of the requirements is to actually have a resolution passed by the city council in order to complete our application, but it already has been submitted at this point.
So, so, you know, that to me causes a little bit of concern, because first off, we have other agencies that, that are involved in ECR, and, and secondly, Herb George's letter and my discussion with him yesterday, this grant comes with an obligation for us to make an investment. And my concern is really, you know, of course, complete streets, we passed a resolution on complete streets, and we said in accordance with our general plan. Our general plan specifically says, you know, doesn't call out that we put sidewalks in and places like that. You know, and I know that we are going to study things on ECR to improve safety, but we said that we were going to actually study it, and we would come back, you know, with an overall plan, and this potentially could, could essentially get something started that has no finish. You know, it's like the cart's before the horse. And really, with the, with the financial obligation that we are guaranteeing, I realize that if they can give us the grant, we'd say, no, thank you, which I don't see that happening. But I would think that since it does have a financial obligation on our part, that it far exceeds the expenditure level of the city manager, that the city council would have been coordinated with and at least given a copy of the proposal and, and at least asked for input. So I just, you know, a little taken aback by it now.
Thank you. Councilmember DeGolia?
I'd just like to, thank you, Mayor Wees. Regarding the applications through the MTC, as Mike indicated, these are highly competitive grants set on C-Kag and the CMAC Management Transportation Board of Committee of C-Kag. And these grants have deadlines, timeframes, and they're very highly competitive. I know last year, South San Francisco received 1.8 million in grants from the TA and MTC for Grand Boulevard El Camino Real enhancements for a section of their El Camino Real. And so I think that we, I think we should commend our staff for jumping on things when they see that it might be a fit and trying to get the application in as soon as possible, because a lot of the analysis does happen with first come, first served, and then it gets funded. If our project doesn't flush out to, even if the grant is, is granted and we don't complete the project satisfactorily, they will reallocate that money, is my understanding. So it's not something that we are completely obligated to, to do. So I think we should move forward with this and see if we can get some of this money. And they're, they're, they're pretty specific, but yet I feel that they're kind of broad in the application of it under the purview of the grant terms. So I, I don't see a problem in it. We've been asking our staff to, to be proactive in trying to get grant money where and whenever they can to help us, and it's, the ratio of our matching fund is pretty small percentage compared to the amount that we would be receiving.
I must, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, with respect to my spending authority, I haven't spent a single dime worth of money that's been allocated as part of this process, so spending authority issue involved here.
Thank you, Pat. Vice Mayor DeGolia?
So question, just a question, Mike. From reviewing the staff report here, it looks to me like, and correct me if I'm wrong. So just to try to bring some clarity, so the residents who are trying to follow this and don't have the background can get it, is it accurate that Atherton has made an application to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission of the County of San Mateo to seat funding for about 1.6 million dollars to improve some pedestrian and bike paths along El Camino between Selby Lane and Fifth Avenue? That, that's an application by Atherton?
That is correct.
Okay. I agree with Councilmember Lewis that the amount of town funds that would be matching funds, which is about $200,000, is small compared to the $1.6 million that would be provided by the Transportation Commission. But I also think that when we're, when, when staff is going to pursue, and I think it's appropriate to pursue funding when it becomes available, even if it isn't the priority of the committee or the master plan group that's studying it. But I agree with Councilmember Woodmore that it is really appropriate to update the council members that are involved with that, to let them know that's going to happen. It shouldn't be a surprise. I mean, really, he should have been involved with that, since he's the representative. It looks like a good project to me. I understand the focus on this because it's in an area between Selby and Fifth, where, you know, there, there's a lot of development that's going on in North Fair Oaks, so along Middlefield, and, and you've characterized this as a more disadvantaged area, so it's more prone to getting funded. My only concern is that if this gets funded, does it mean that we may be disadvantaged in getting funding for some of the safe crossing issues that we really need to address in Atherton along El Camino? I don't assume that it does that, but that's my only question.
And your, your point is well taken as far as surprises, and, and again, staff apologizes and will do a better job next time. I don't, you know, if the town were fortunate enough to get this grant awarded, I do not believe it's going to impact negatively on future projects, other types of projects. I mean, you know, there are various grant categories and, you know, grants for different types of projects. So I don't believe this, there is an equal system, so to speak, that they don't really keep track of who's getting money and how much. It really is looking for the best projects, because in many, in many times, these are federal dollars, and they're looking to, to get certain types of projects built and to incentivize certain types of, of uses away from the automobile. So that's really what they're looking for.
Thank you, Mike. The please, Councilmember Woodmore?
When I look at the, the picture that's in the document, which is the only thing we have since we don't have to propose it, it looks like you're showing that we're reducing the. since we don't have the proposal, it looks like you're showing that we're reducing the lanes to two lanes, is that, is that a fair assessment?
It, it could. You know, that's going to be part, if this grant is awarded, that's going to be part of the engineering feasibility, is, one thing is to, you know, utilize an existing vehicular lane for a class one bike lane. But of course, that's going to require Caltrans approval. Or another alternative would be to provide a class two in place of a class one. But in any case, the whole purpose is to improve, you know, pedestrian and bicycle access between Fifth and Selby, and that's why the hybrid pedestrian beacon, to provide a safe crossing at that intersection, is also included as part of this.
I'm all for that part, I'm all for that part. I guess I'm concerned about the reduction of the lanes because we've already had some discussion with the fire district, and they were promised that they would be coordinated with. And the other thing is with regards to the pedestrian areas, you know, our general plan, and I know when we pass the complete streets, which is, you know, this, this document talked about complete streets, and of course, the state's version of complete streets and the county's version of the complete streets, and our version of the complete streets are different. Because we said, in accordance with our general plan, which pretty much precludes sidewalks and raised curbs, except for where they're already existing, to maintain the rural nature of our, and so here we're going against it. Or at least that's my interpretation. Now, it could be, it could be that because it's a state street and a major thoroughfare, that it's exempt from that. You know, I'm just not, not clear, but, but, you know, my big objection, you know, with regards to what we've shown here, and I think one of the things that kind of alerted our brethren in the fire district, is that we're showing again, once again, two lanes, and they feel that they haven't been coordinated with. So I would hope that we would quickly close that gap, and, you know, and try and make sure that they feel comfortable, you know, and assure them, and I agree, as George said...